Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the August 6th regular meeting of Stanley County Board of Commissioners. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you would, join Commissioner Effer with invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Effer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. "Our grace follow, we humbly come to you again this day, thanking you for this beautiful day. Lord, thank you for the rain you sent our way last week, Lord, and thank you for the sunshine you brought our way today. Lord, we pray for this board, pray for strength and wisdom as we make decisions for the county. Lord, I pray for the county, and, Lord, I pray for those who are hurting, I pray for those who have lost loved ones, and, Lord, I pray you just lift them up. Pray that you'll continue to bless us as you always have. These things we ask in your precious name that I pray. Amen."
If y'all would...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the vision of the great vision of Justice of our home.
Board, is there any adjustments, or do we have an approval of the agenda? I think we've got, just made aware, we've got the one budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Swain.
I move to accept the agenda as presented and add item 10-F to the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second by Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you. All right. Item 1, retirement award presentation for Nancy Whitley, central permitting. Good evening, Nancy. Nancy Whitley began working for Stanley County in June of 1994 in the inspections Department issuing building permits. In July 2006, inspections along with environmental health and the zoning office merged and moved to the commons. Nancy was a vital part in the move and flow of the three departments coming together. She trained the other ladies in the day-to-day operations of inspections, and she did a very well job in learning the day-to-day operations of environmental health and zoning. Nancy will not only be missed by all the staff, but the customers as well. And I can tell you by the business that I'm in that that is certainly true. Nancy has a wonderful working relationship with all the contractors. Nancy and her husband have two children and five grandchildren. I'm sure she plans to spend as much time as possible on her front porch swing. If, Commissioners, if y'all would like to join us, Nancy, if you'll join us down front, we would like to take a picture with you, and got something for you.
(inaudible)
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 Item 2, 911, public hearing to consider naming Patriots Point Drive. Presenter Karen McDaniel, 911 Director. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening. I'm bringing before you tonight a private drive that we need to name. The 911 center sent out all the appropriate letters after receiving a call from a property owner who was building a residence and a horse barn on a private drive off of Reenie Ford Road. This would have made, both of those will have a different address, so that would have made an A and a B. And he wanted to have his own address, and we, in our ordinance, would want to name that as well. We sent out letters asking the property owners, there were eight of them, to send back names that we could look at to see what we could, what would fit within our system. We came up with three names that we sent back out for voting. Those three names were Patriots Point Drive, McKnight Lane, and Independence Way. We received four votes back from four property owners, two of them for Patriots Point Drive and two for Independence Way. On July the 24th, we called together the Address Program Committee, which is made up of the county manager, Andy Lucas, the zoning director, Michael Sandy, myself as the 911 Director, Operations Manager, Ashley Schu, and at the time, our database coordinator, Lisa Mayberry. We unanimously voted for Patriots Point Drive. We've put up notices for a public hearing, and I'm requesting tonight that you hold a public hearing and make a decision on the road name for this private drive.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the naming of this road?
I didn't sign up, but I am the only resident who's going to be changing their address?
Come on forward. If you will, state your name and address and tell us what your concerns are.
I'm Lisa Gross. I'm at 8851 Renee Ford, or Reenie Ford, and I'm for the Patriots Point name. I don't really have any other concerns. I just like the name. It was to honor my father. I don't know if y'all saw any of that information that she had sent, but the two house, the other neighbors, the new neighbors that are building the barn and building the house, they are for this name also. So, I wasn't really going to speak unless somebody was speaking against it, but...
So, my understanding is your address is the only address that's going to change?
Correct.
And you support the name?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Effer?
I would make a motion that we approve the private drive as Patriots Point Drive.
Second. Got a motion from Commissioner Effer, second from Commissioner Swain. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you, Karen. Item 3, tax collectors' annual settlement for fiscal year 1718. Presenter Clinton Swerengen, our tax administrator. Good evening, Clinton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad to be with you again tonight. It's hard to believe another year's flown by, but it has, and we're back here again with the annual settlement for fiscal year 1718, which just ended on June 30th of this year. Pursuant to General Statute 105373, the tax collector has to appear before the board and give the annual settlement report. Our report this year, our real and personal property collection rate was 97.28 percent. That is up from 97.24 percent last year. It's not a big increase, but it is an increase. Couple of things to point out on that. I am a little upset that June 30th was on a Saturday this year, so I felt like I got cheated out of a day of collecting taxes to get that rate up a little higher. We had a lot of mail on Monday, which obviously flows into this year unfortunately, so it would have been, would have been more. Another thing to note is 2017 was a reval year, so the rate went up a little bit, but we collected about 1.5 million more dollars than we did the year before, so that's a positive note as well. Just as information, the motor vehicle tax rate was 99.57. That is not collected by my office. That is done through the Department of Motor Vehicles and their tax and tag program that switched over in 2013. It's a wonderful program, I can't speak enough of it. Basically, almost ensures 100% collection rate. There's a few little loopholes that people can get through, but my office doesn't collect any of that, but we do still handle all the assessments and all the appeals of that. You have six attachments in your packet tonight. The first attachment is an analysis of the countywide levy. It basically breaks everything down for discoveries and penalties and releases, and gives you the total there at the end, which is the 97.28 percent. The second attachment is our annual audit report. This is something that we fill out every month. Finance gets a copy, Andy gets a copy. It just lets us know where we're at on a month-to-month basis and lets us know how we're doing compared to the previous year. The third report is our delinquent collections report. So, in addition to collecting the 2017 taxes last year, we also were collecting the previous 10 years of delinquent taxes that we obviously won't for the county's coffers. You will see that the 2007, '08 year, it will fall off August 31st of this year due to the statute of limitations. That number is 67,15741. As a point of reference, that number last year was 68,515. So, we're a little bit better there, about 1,500 bucks. Last year was the first year this number's ever been below $70,000. It's usually in the 80s to 85. So, we're recouping as much of that old money as we can. Obviously, if somebody wants to come in and pay these bills, we'll take their money, but after 10 years, I can't enforce collect anymore. The fourth attachment is our end-of-year report. It's three programs that we run to counterbalance what we have before. The final number there is 774,73792. That's what's uncollected in 18's tax year, excuse me, 17's tax year as of June 30th. Obviously, since then, that number has come down even more. We've still been taking payments. In comparison, 2016, the number was 746,000, so it was less last year, but once again, we had 1.5 million more we collected, so that's why the rate is higher, even though the amount is a little bit less there. You'll also notice on this report, you'll see it's real and personal, 100s, state assessed, 150. Our public service companies are real good at paying what they owe us, so that's why that's a zero. And then, registered motor vehicles doesn't exist for us anymore. And then, you'll see a new item on there called 125-GAP. That is our new gap billing. That's something that the General Assembly gave us the authority to tax in late of 2017. Basically, you have your car, and say your tag runs from June of 17 till June of 18. Well, say June of 18, you don't renew your tag, and the car just sits at your house for four or five months. Maybe you need to do some work on it, or you need to do something like that, and it just sits there. And then, five months later, you go and renew your tag. Well, guess what? That's for the upcoming 12 months. What about the five months that it sat? What VTS does is runs that van for the owner. If it's the same owner and the same van, it sends us notification of that, and then we bill them taxes for that five months. So, that's revenue that we've always missed out on in the past that now, thanks to VTS, we're able to recoup that money. I mean, you can see it's $7,900, but that's still $7,900 that, you know, that's what's uncollected. We collected about 8,000 of it. It's got some weird rules for collections and when it becomes delinquent, kind of ties our hands a little bit on some years. So, for example, if you have a gap bill that is September through December of 17, it's not due until January 5th of 19. So, the General Assembly really gives the taxpayer plenty of time to pay this gap bill if they get one. So, really, nothing I can do on the 17 bills until they become delinquent January of 19. So, just want to give you a little information that wasn't on there last year so that you kind of know what it was. The fifth attachment is affidavit saying I've done everything I can to collect as much as I possibly can. And the sixth attachment is the order directing me to collect the taxes for 18, which has already hit the mail, and we're already collecting that money as we speak. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'd like to thank each member of my staff. I have 14 people that work for me, and tax assessor in tax collector's office. All the numbers I gave you tonight is just Stanley County numbers. We're responsible for the county, 10 municipalities, 13 fire districts, and two special districts that we collect for. That's about $41 million a year in current money, not counting the 10 years of old money, and about $4.8 billion of value that we assess on all the property in the county. So, very proud of my staff, proud of this report. I said it last year, I can say it again this year, it's the highest collection rate we've ever had in Stanley County. So, like, keep that path going, moving forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clinton, for that report, and thank you very much for your hard work. Board members, are there any questions? Mr. Swerengen?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Effer?
I don't have a question, but Clinton, I do appreciate your staff and all your hard work, and also, thank you for that little postcard I got mailed.
You got your birthday card?
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay. That's what everybody says, they got their birthday card.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. If there's no other questions, I need a motion to approve the annual settlement report, and then, one to charge the tax collector with collecting 1819 taxes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Effer? I mean, Mr. Swain, I'm sorry.
I move to accept and approve the report as presented tonight by Mr. Swerengen, and also approve the attached order directing the tax collector to collect 201819 taxes.
I'd like to second that motion.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Clinton. Item 4, utilities. Contract award for Phase 3 of the waterline hookup program. Presenter, Edra Turner, Utilities Project Coordinator. And I see Ms. Davis is here as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the Phase 3 of the waterline hookup program and award the project to the lowest responsible contractor selected. As you may recall, I came here on your meeting on March 5th of this year and let you know that Stanley County Utilities contracted with the Central Council of, Central Carolina Council of Governments to facilitate our waterline grant hookup program. We provided a list, and working with approximately 100 names, CCOG was able to select 25 of single-family home locations that met HUD's guidelines for the low to moderate household income levels qualifications and urgent need of our financial assistance to connect them to the public water system. As of June 29th, the first and second phase of the program was completed, and 17 families was connected to the public water system and disconnected from their wells. After the 29th, I gave everyone, all 17 homes, a phone call, and I spoke to someone in that household and asked them how the project went as a follow-up. Every homeowner had a positive experience as well as positive feedback about the contractor that was selected. Everyone is extremely thankful for the excellent water quality and quantity that they now have, and they asked me to extend a very special thank you for making it possible. As I mentioned, this is the third and the final round in this group of hookups scheduled in this year's funding. On June 20th, 2018, we mailed out 22 bid packages to local licensed plumbers in the area, and you have attachment there in your packet of that list that we mailed them to. Also, you have an attachment of a photocopy of one of the envelopes, and on that envelope, there was a label printed in red to let the plumbers know the contents of the package and who it was for. And also, you have a copy of the bid cover letter that was included. When we sent these bid packages out on June 20th, we usually have two weeks for them to work up their bids and get them back to us. That was going to fall the week of the 4th. So, we extended this group of bids three weeks out and made them due July 13th, 2018, at 11:00 a.m. to our office, which is Stanley County Utilities Department, 1,000 North First Street, Suite 12, Albemarle, North Carolina. On Friday, July 13th, 11 o'clock, we had one bid contractor show up for our meeting. We did not have any other packages in the mail or hand-delivered to our office at the time of the opening of the bid. So, no other bids were received, only the one, and that was United Plumbing and Associates out of Concord, North Carolina. With that being said, this program has been a big success. I have received additional phone calls, additional people coming into the office requesting applications because they've heard about our program, and they're needing assistance and reaching out to us. So, we took some people off the list, but now we've put more back on because word of mouth is getting around. So, we're hoping in the future that we'll be able to fund more of these projects. So, at this time, Stanley County Utilities would like to award the Waterline Hookup Program Project Plumbing Service Contract Phase 3, a total of eight properties here in Stanley County, not covered by the first two groups, in the amount of $12,950 to United Plumbing and Associates of Concord. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and it's in regard to insurance coverages. What kind of insurance coverages do we require the contractor to have?
If I could, I'd like to ask Ms. Davis to respond to that. There was some contracts that went back and forth, and that was in the first phase, so that number right now escapes my memory.
They have to have a million dollars of liability coverage.
Would you give us a follow-up?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? I'd make one comment. I was going to save this for the end, but I guess it's, since we're on this subject, it's worth making now. I had Ms. Lynn Gibson give me a call, and she was one of the customers that was hooked up in the last group, and she could not say enough of good things about the folks who did her hookup, and was very appreciative of this board and staff, of everything that has happened, and told me she would be watching us when we're, I guess, back on, you know, 19 or whatever it is, later, so she'll see us at some point. But she had good things to say. I know that this board has had concerns about sending work out of county, and I've certainly had those concerns, but I think we're getting, getting good work for our money. They're taking care of our citizens and our customers, and so I don't see a problem with not awarding this contract to United Plumbing.
I just have one question. Do you have any idea why no one in the county bids? Because they're so low? I mean, because there's not a lot of money in it, or?
I really don't know. In the past, we've only had two or three that would apply throughout the history of doing this program. And I know one of those is a contractor who works out of town a lot, so scheduling became a problem for that particular contractor or that particular plumber. But for the others, I really don't have any information. There's no, there was no feedback given to us about the program, or concerns, or calls, or even asking questions about the program, so we don't know why they're not participating. We just don't have any information.
Yeah, I'm not placing blame. I was just curious, out of 22, you got none, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to award the plumbing service to United Plumbing of Concord.
Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre, second from Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you. Thanks for all y'all's hard work.
Thank you.
Item 5, Department of Health and Human Services.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dolly.
Hope you all are well this evening. So, Ms. Patricia Hancock and I are sort of going to tag-team this presentation because there are two separate presentations related to the same group of people that meet together. So, you see the slide presentation, it probably is in your packet that you received. So, basically, the Community Child Protection Team is part of the Local Protection Prevention Team, which is a component of the North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention System. Local teams are typically blended, and so, the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team, which Ms. Hancock is going to talk to you about, are meeting together at the same time because it typically has the same individuals that attend those meetings. The Community Child Protection Team was created in 1991 to fulfill the Citizen Review Panda requirements that were authorized by the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act. These two groups basically are responsible for promoting wellness, preventing harm, and preventing death as it relates to childhood deaths. So, you have basically two components. You have child welfare, which is the Community Child Protection Team, which basically looks at neglect and dependency and abuse in order to prevent childhood deaths. And then, for public health, you have illness, injury that are looked at to prevent death in childhood. The Charge of the State Child Fatality Prevention System is part of Article 14 of the North Carolina Juvenile Code, and there's also information in the North Carolina General Statute 7B1400. So, the purpose of the Community Child Protection Team is to identify any deficiencies that may exist in the child welfare system and to identify resources. It is to identify any needs for changes as well as promoting child well-being within the county and increase public awareness about the need for protection of children. The responsibility of the Community Child Protection Team is to provide a report to both the Health and Human Services Board and the County Commissioners. At these particular meetings, the DSS provides case information, and we request community partners to share information about services and resources and programs that may benefit a particular family. The cases that are for review, we are required to review any child deaths that occur in the previous 12 months in which the family was involved with child protective services, either through providing provision of services or if there was a report made with that particular family. We also review substantiated cases of abuse and any cases that may be determined to be in need of services or that have reports of neglect. In addition, our team members, members of our DSS staff, can request that cases be reviewed to identify any community supports or services which may benefit a particular family they're working with in order to protect the children. The process is that there's a case presentation. The staff that are involved introduce the case and provide information as well as the reason while they're requesting a review. The social work staff will then present the case, and then follows a team discussion about any services or resources that may exist in the, in the community that may be of help to the family. In addition, there are sometimes there are questions asked about, well, have you thought of... of this particular service or have you explored this particular resource? And then, the social worker can then respond to those. As a result, recommendations are requested. So, in some instances, the request is made to the community members, you know, what do you think we should do next in this case or what other resources might be available? There is community collaboration around particular resources and resource needs, and sometimes there are actually changes to laws or policy. So, for example, sometimes one particular policy or law change that may have happened, that has happened in the past, has to do with having those carbon monoxide, monoxide detectors in houses. In addition, training and education to families about safe sleep habits to prevent SIDS deaths, or Sudden Infant Death Syndrome. And then, also, some policies enlured around teen driving, such as the accelerated or graduated driver's license program. So, there is community collaboration, and we work together to identify new initiatives that may be available in a local community. So, for instance, in, in a, in a local community, the Safe Surrender Law started and before it became a law across the state. That particular Safe Surrender Law allows young infants to be surrendered in a safe place so that with no ramifications for abandonment on the part of the mom or the dad that dropped off the child. So, we're required to provide a report to the Health and Human Services Board as well as to you, the County Commissioners. And then, and, and we are to make recommendations to you about advocacy for system improvements or needed resources. We are also required to make a report for the North Carolina, to the North Carolina Division of Social Services. In the past year, you see in your packet our report that we made, and the recommendations for this past year had to do with issues as it related to mental illness and mental illness resources in the community as well as substance abuse issues that were identified as needs or issues for those families. And so, we didn't have any direct recommendation, but it does go back to the need for resources for those particular areas. So, I just want to share with you, on the slide, is the North Carolina Fatality Prevention System structure. You will see both the Division of Public Health and the Division of Social Services listed on that particular slide. And then, you'll see underneath that, under DSS is the Community Child Protection Team, and under the Division of Public Health, the Child Fatality Team. And then, you'll see how that, on the final slide, most teams are blended, as ours is here in Stanley County. And we are able to work together to identify the needs of these individual families in order to best provide the resources that are needed with the families that we're currently working with. And that's it for the Community Child Protection Team. You have any questions at this moment on that?
Thank you, Dolly. Any questions on the board?
All right, so I invite Patricia to come up to talk about the Child Fatality Prevention
Good evening. I would like to talk with you this afternoon about the Child Fatality Prevention Team and what we've done in the year 2017. In 1993, the North Carolina General Assembly passed a law saying that each local health department needed to establish, or each local county needed to establish a child fatality team. The purpose of that team is to confidentially review all child deaths that happen to children between the age of zero and 18 years and the ones that reside in the county at the time of their death. The goal of the Child Fatality Team is to reduce the number and rate of child deaths by identifying deficiencies in delivery of services to children and families by public agencies, to make and carry out recommendations for change that will prevent future deaths, and to promote understandings of the causes of child deaths. Local teams review child deaths that occurred in the previous year for the quarter that they're meeting in. Our team is a blended team, as Dolly has talked about, and it consists of representatives from the public and non-public agencies. Examples of our team are our health department employees, there are law enforcement members, the guardian ad litem, emergency management, and local medical providers. Others that provide services to children and their families are also included as part of this team. There is also a parent that has lost a child that is included in this team. Our meetings are quarterly, and they're normally held in February, May, August, and November. It is a joint meeting with the Community Child Protection Team, and there are multiple community agencies that are represented on the team. So, what happens when they make recommendations? Team recommendations are captured by the team coordinator, which for our team is a health department employee. The team coordinator compiles a report with any recommendations that are decided on by the team and then sends that information to the State Child Fatality Team. There is an annual report that is presented to the Stanley County Consolidated Human Services Board and then to the Board of Commissioners. Some of the successes of the Child Fatality Protection Team in North Carolina are the booster seat and infant car seat law, bicycle helmet laws, increased penalties for speeding in school zones, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, the graduated driver's license program, and reduction in the infant mortality rate. And that's been, it's happened because of 17P, which is a medication that women can get during their pregnancy to prevent preterm births, SIDS trainings, and other types of educational trainings that have happened. In 2017, there were a total of nine child deaths that were reviewed by the team. There were no system problems that were identified and no real true hard recommendations that came from the team. There was some discussion among members that there needed to be continued education related to speed and safety with motor vehicle operation, faster drug screening process, and more consequences for safety plan violations, as well as continued SIDS education, teaching, and related programs to SIDS prevention. Our team has been involved in several community events. One is the mock car crash that happens at the high schools when it's close to prom season, car seat safety inspection points. There is one that is set up all the time at one of the fire departments, partners in health activities, and also the Smith splash. And that actually came out or was part of our child fatality because we had had a child death that was related to a pool. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Chairman, I have one.
Commissioner Swain.
The note on the, the actual report, the, this report, I don't know. There's a note there that says, and you mentioned it in the PowerPoint, speed up, find a way to speed up drug screening results. What is that referring to? Like, somebody driving drunk or under the influence?
This was actually dealing with a child or with a child death. But my understanding is that it was wanting to make sure if there was a death that occurred that they had a faster way to note, to find out if someone was using.
So, is that the state lab, or is that something the county does, or is that a?
That I would have to get back with you on.
Okay.
So, that I knew specific what this recommendation was.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we need formal action to accept this report? You need, you need action on the Community Child Protection Team. There's no action required on the fatality team.
No.
There is reaction on the Community Child Protection Team. First one that Dolly gave us the report on.
I gave.
My understanding is you need to take action on that to improve that.
No, to my knowledge, there is no requirement that we receive any action related to the reports.
Because there was a note that we needed to, but you're telling us that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
He wanted to know if there was a requirement for them to take action.
Not to my knowledge.
All right, thank you. All right, item, item six, Community Development Block Grant, Application of Public Hearing. Presenter, County Manager, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And actually, James Luster from the Central Carolina Council of Governments is also here if there are any questions this evening. But the county is actually working with Central Carolina Council of Governments to apply for a neighborhood revitalization grant. These are being offered through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Basically, housing rehabilitation for qualifying elderly and disabled low to moderate income homeowners. You can get an award up to $750,000. We have to hold two public hearings. This will be the, the first on August 6th. We'll also have another public hearing on September 4th, and that deadline is September 28th. And so, this is meeting one of the requirement of the first public hearing. We'll provide notice and do another public hearing before the September 4th meeting. And then, Mr. Luster and his staff will submit the grant on our behalf by the September 28th deadline. I'll be happy to answer any questions, or as I've stated, Mr. Luster is here in case the board has any specific questions related to the grant.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions from board members? Not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there any here, anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this CDBG application and grant? Anyone here that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there any other questions or discussion? Andy, there's nothing else we need to do.
Right, you just have to take action to hold the public hearing and open it, close it. And again, we'll have to do that again on September 4th. Just making sure we provide adequate notice, given there's federal funding.
All right. Thank you. Item seven, Region F Agent Advisory Committee Appointment. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
This item is actually held over, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, from a, a previous board meeting. There's two vacant positions, one delegate for a two-year term that would end June 30th of 2020, and one alternate position, which would end, end 2019, June 30th. There is an enclosed application for consideration, and I think their recommendation is to appoint Dr. Johnny Woodward as a delegate to serve for a two-year term ending June 30th of 2020. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I move to accept their recommendation and appoint Dr. Johnny Woodward as a delegate to serve a two-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I've got one. Commissioner Eifert, where is Red Ridge Court at? Okay, all right, I was just. Okay, that's right, that's right. Yeah, well, for some reason, I was just thinking that was in Red Bridge, and I thought, well, maybe he's not actually in the county, but, okay. Just caught me off-guard a little bit. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Item eight, selection of a voting delegate for 2018 NCACC Annual Conference. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another item that was held over from a previous board meeting, seeking to have a voting delegate for the county at the business meeting that'll take place, appears from 3:00 to 4:30 on Saturday, August 25th, at the upcoming North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference in Hickory.
Any questions, comments? Forward anybody? Nobody jumping for it? Well, I will, I'll schedule it, and if the board is okay, I'll let Commissioner Morgan be my backup in case something happens.
Make a motion that Mr. Burleson be our delegate and that Mr. Morgan will be our alternate in case he can't do it.
Second. Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre and second from Commissioner Swain. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right, item nine, Livestock Arena Bid Review Follow-Up. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a, a third item that was sort of held over from the, the last meeting. Board gave staff some direction to work with the architect and the lowest responsive bidder, which was SimCon, to look at some, doing some cost engineering. Also, met with the advisory group that's sort of been spearheading the fundraising for this, just to kind of get their feedback with the architect on, in terms of any changes that we may make to the scope of the project, what kind of, you know, their, their thoughts. And so, we sat and had, had a conversation with the architect and gave him some direction and went back. And you can see sort of the result of that, which reduced the project from the original bid of 3.492, almost 3.5, down to 2.655, almost 2.7. So, it did reduce it. At the same time, it's really compromises the quality of the project in that you're taking basically the metal roof off of the livestock arena. So, you, you still have the, you know, you're still gonna have your entrance with your concession stand and ticket office. You'd still have your restrooms, but then you would basically just walk around to a bowl that would go down with your 600, under, under, sorry, 600, yeah, 600 seat, you know, seat stadium seating. And actually, one of the things they took out of it was the bleachers, too, and you just have concrete stair, which, so if you look at this, it's not really the scope of the project that you really want. And the community's really done a nice job fundraising. There certainly is, obviously, from, you know, everything that they've been able to raise. If you take the $200,000 out that was set aside specifically from equipment, from the Ag Preservation Trust Fund, non-public, you know, non-county, or should say, non-county revenue was over, almost over $900,000. So, obviously, there's, there's, there's interest in this facility in the community. The issue I really have is that, you know, you're still talking about a gap of about 1.4, almost 1.5 million dollars above and beyond the 250 the county's already said that they were putting into this project. You know, we've got the EMS base that we really need to address. We have the fifth radio tower that we really need to address, and the board has said that those are priority one projects for your, you know, five-year capital plan. You also have Riverstone Economic Development Park. You got the schools with plenty of needs. And so, I, I just have a concern of the 1.5 when really you're not even getting the real project. You're not getting the roof over the livestock arena, so you're limited in what, the number of days and events you can have because you, you no longer have a roof. So, if it, you know, if you have, not that if it rains real hard, you're not gonna get, potentially get wet anyways because there's, it's not enclosed in on all sides, but it certainly helps to have that ton of rain. And it certainly would help in real hot days to be able to have that covered area so you're not in the direct sun and you have the fans moving air underneath there. So, I've had conversations with the members of the advisory group that have helped develop this project. And I, my conversations have been, have been, you know, we really would, don't want to see the county spend 1.5 million if we're really not getting the true project. I think they would rather us continue to try to fundraise, raise awareness in the community that this project is, is, is gonna be more than what we originally thought, and we need to get out there and pound the pavement and see if there's, you know, some foundation money, private money that's still, still out there that is untapped, and potentially bring this back to the board, you know, if, you know, if they can raise. You know, you're looking at a gap of about 1.5, but that's, really, you need to, really the gap's bigger than that when you add the, you know, 750 to 800,000 back in for the roof. So, you're really looking at about a 2.3 million dollar gap at least. And so, you know, if they can raise half of that, or if they can raise three-quarters of that, you know, bring it back to the board and see if it's now, again, at that time, the project may be more or maybe less because, you know, this bid was only do, only good for 60 days, you know, after, you know, early September, that it'll, it'll go away. So, you take, you run that risk, but at the same time, you have a really, you do have a better understanding what this project's gonna a better understanding what this project's going to cost, certainly in the existing economy. So, I can't recommend it. Certainly, it's, you know, it's up to the Board to do what you want, you know. You're looking, like I say, you're looking at appropriating about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars to do the project, and this doesn't include the roof. This is really just, that's just, it doesn't include the metal structure. So, you know, if you borrowed 1.5 million at a three-and-a-half percent interest rate, you're looking at, over 15 years, you're looking at 130,000 worth of debt service, over 130,000. So, you know, that's $130,000 you'd have to come up with in next year's budget to be able to, be able to afford the debt. And again, that's only gets you, that doesn't get you the metal roof structure over the project, and you're still, you know, going to be almost a million dollars short, or 750,000 short of that. I'll leave it with that. Again, staff's recommendation is that we continue to try to fundraise and raise awareness in the community, and we'd really like this project done, but it's just, it's outside of what the Board can afford at this point, given other priorities on the public safety side and economic development. So, I'll be happy to answer questions. I do know there's members of the fundraising advisory group that were, really have spearheaded that and worked extremely hard to raise money in the community. They're here this evening, if you, I'm sure they wouldn't mind talking if you ask them to. But I'll stop there and answer any questions, or, but again, it's the pleasure, whatever the Board's pleasure is at this point with this project.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions, comments from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the fundraising advisory committee members and their thoughts on this project.
I've talked to, I think the three of them that are there, I've talked to today myself, so. Good evening, Reggie, come on, come on up. Sorry to put you guys on the spot, but you guys are experts.
We're kind of used to it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity actually to be able to speak to you concerning this. We want to thank you for your support in the past. You guys have been good to us, you've been supportive of our efforts, and we in no way feel like this is the end of this. Wayne and I have discussed it, Curtis and some of the other members, and we just got to get back out now and get after it a little harder, see what we can come up with now. We're not, as, well, I speak for me, and I have spoke with some of these guys, but I'm personally not in favor of proceeding with the project without the building on it. I feel like if we do that, what we'll have maybe a year from now is a hole in the ground with weeds growing up in it, and people looking at us saying, is that what I gave you my money for? We don't want that. We want the project done right when it's done. And the shame of it is that I just noticed today that it was one year ago today that we made a presentation to you guys, giving you an update of where the project was, and if the project could have gone to bid within 30 days of that meeting a year ago, we'd saved a million dollars, just that simple. So, now, and that's water over the dam, so now, we just proceed forward and continue our fundraising efforts, and we're continuing to look at some different foundations and groups that may be able to assist us. But in our mind, you know, it's not a dead issue. I've spoken with several people who have contributed to the project, you know, personal dollars, and there's no problem, as long as we are continuing to try to put the thing up like we showed them, you know, what we promised them. Guys?
Well, I basically feel the same way as Reggie does. I'd hate to, you know, just totally stop the project, but we need to give us a little time maybe to beat the bushes and come up with some more money somehow or another, and hopefully, something good will come along and help us out also.
And I'll just add that we would not, as our group, ask the taxpayers of Stanley County to throw in 1.5, $2 million for this project. That was not our intentions when we started. It's just a bump in the road. We don't feel negative about it. I mean, we hate that we're not going to pull it off today, but we're a million dollars ahead of where we were, you know, last year or a year and a half this time. So, we're going to go back out and beg and borrow and steal and do what we need to do without putting the burden on the taxpayers of Stanley County.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts were along your lines, and as important as this can be to our community, we don't need to sell it short. It needs to be what you decided to do to begin with, and like you say, if we don't, then you might end up with a hole in the ground. And I wish we could do more in the future, you know, things change with the economy. It might be we can do more, but I hope we could, but I just wonder if they're not, since, you know, this is kind of a tourism-type venture, not some grants out there that, I mean, you've probably looked at that, so.
We're looking, yeah, we're looking. We have, I know of two organizations that we have not filed with at this point, because we could not until we had a formal bid for the project, and now that we've got that bid, we can file, you know, with them. So, hopefully, you know, six months from now, by the end of the year, we might be back here with a smile on our face and telling you a different story. And again, I thank each one of you for your support so far with the project.
Well, thank you all for all the hard work you're doing, because I know it's no easy matter.
Thank you much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you all being here. I think maybe there's more questions, I don't know.
I just had a statement.
Mr. Swain.
Thank you, guys, for all the work you've done. In the spirit of not letting this die, I'd like to table it until our January meeting and at least bring it back up. We're having fairly new Board at that point, but, you know, I think it's something that we need to keep fresh and keep discussing, and that gives another four months, five months for, lots of things can change in that amount of time, so.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I've got a motion to table this until the January meeting, first January meeting, and I've got a second. Is there any further discussion? I think I certainly support that and support the project in general. I just echo what these guys have said and talked to each one of them today, so I know where they're at. All in favor of that motion, signal five to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Item 10, Consent Agenda with the added item of Item F, Sheriff's Office Budget Amendment.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, signal five to say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Public comment, I know we're expecting one. I've got Jamie Starwalt has signed up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present this ordinance. I'd like to thank you also for the beautiful invocation earlier. I do apologize if you can't see me. I'm not quite five feet, so I apologize if you can't see me in there. First, I would like to read over the proposal and then explain why we are proposing it. The proposal in general is not written in one specific way. It's bits and pieces that I've put together from other ordinances that I have looked over, and then I know that, you know, God willing, we go through with it, that it'll be written by law, or an attorney, somebody knows how to do that kind of thing. I am here on behalf of late Dwight Lealman and family. In your ordinances that you have listed, you have defined a berm as an earthen embankment or wall, which is just very, very vague. That's in with, I found that in with like the planning and that kind of thing. I would like to recommend that you have more of a detailed definition of what a berm is, if it's going to be used for target shooting. I have brought, I know the NRA recommends some things, and I also did not realize that was 160-some pages, but I have a book here that also recommends different heights when you build a berm for target shooting with different weapons. So, I'm going to move on to the proposal. Each part, and I don't know, do y'all have the copy? I have copies of what I'm going over that I can provide you. I'm reading something that came from Mecklenburg County. "Each person discharging a firearm is responsible for exhibiting reasonable regard for the safety and property of other persons, and for discharging the firearm in such a manner as to assure that all projectiles come to rest safely within the boundaries of the property or properties on which the person is authorized to be shooting. It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm within 900 feet of any of the following," and it goes into details and specifics. Curritick County says, "It is unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm carelessly or heedlessly in disregard for the safety of others." Curritick County also says, "It is unlawful for any persons to discharge a firearm in any manner that causes a projectile to leave the property on which it is discharged. The subsections shall not apply when the person discharging the firearm has written permission for such activity from the person on whose property the projectile comes to rest. The document demonstrating written permission must be immediately available at the time of the discharge and shall be provided to any investigating officer." Another one from Curritick County, "It is unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm after that person has consumed alcohol or any other impairing substance." What I did find that you have in place in Stanley County, Section 412 Rural Home Occupations, 412.7 states, "The rural home occupation should not create smoke, odor, dust, or noise which would cause health hazard or nuisance to surrounding property." Cabarrus County states, "It shall be unlawful for any person to use and discharge any firearm, BB gun, or air compression gun of any kind, nature, make, or description within a distance of 500 yards of any business or residential district in the county situated outside the corporate limits of any and all municipalities in the county." And then there's a penalty. I won't go over, but there's a penalty for that with Cabarrus County. And then the last one is with Mecklenburg County. "A person targeting shooting on his own property or another person's property if he has on his person written permission for the activity from the owner of the property, exhibiting reasonable regard for the safety and property of other persons. If such person is using a backstop substantially in accordance with specifications promulgated by the NRA or an equivalent nationally recognized firearm safety organization for the type of caliber and arms, firearms being fired, and if such person has on this person written permission for such activity from all persons owning any of the types of places or structures listed in Section 2A to F, which are located within 900 feet of the target shooting activity." Again, that's from Mecklenburg County. You may notice that some of these overlap and kind of go in regards to, they are similar. The reason for that is they're obviously meant for the safety of people around, that live around. The reason that we are proposing the gist of this ordinance proposal is target shooting should be done in a safe manner, including before dusk, not towards someone's house, and of course, not while intoxicated of any alcohol or impairing substance. And then the reason, oh, one other thing that I did bring that I can give you a copy of is the, oh, what is, what is this map called? GIS map of the home where I'm going to show you, where it was only 300 and approximately 360 feet. Why are we here? Just quoting what you have, you, the mission of the Stanley County Board of Commissioners is to provide leadership and support and to advocate actions for the effective, for an effective county government that seeks to enhance the quality of life for present and future generations of the people of Stanley County. You have different responsibilities, including those that are related to the welfare and the environment. Why are we here? This man, Dwight Lealman, 62 years old, lost his life on April 27th from a stray bullet through the woods from someone target shooting. Again, it was 360 feet away. This is my stepdad of 20 years. And just looking at an ordinance, an ordinance covers matters not already covered by state and federal laws, including safety. You do have something in regards to noise being a nuisance by surrounding property. We personally feel that this would not have happened had something been in place, if our ordinance had been in place. All we are asking and recommending is that you consider putting something in place that is guidelines for some, someone that's target shooting in their yard. And again, you know, this is different, a little different from hunting, I know, but just that it's considered for target shooting, just for the safety of your people. And then, closing, I'd like to show you one more picture. This is him with his family, his children, his grandchildren. He has six grandchildren, one of them not being pictured, and that's my seven-month-old that will never know him, other than this picture. Had something been in place, this probably would not have happened. Please put yourself in this situation. If it was your brother, your husband, your best friend, your uncle. In closing, please let his death not be some tragic story that is sad and we just move on. Let it be something that you put in place, because you have that authority to put in place for your future generations to prevent something happening, maybe even to a child. My mom and my five-year-old nephew were there when this happened, and it could have easily been them. So, again, I want to thank you for your time, and I just ask that you will consider this. Thank you. I want to have copies, if you would like anything. I have those with me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. I can't imagine what your family's going through. Thank you for your recommendation. Miss? I'm sorry. I was going to say, ma'am, if you will, we'll get Tyler down here at the end, is the clerk to our Board that takes our notes and stuff. If you'll get a copy to her, she'll get them distributed to us, and we'll be able to take a look at everything. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, all right. Is there anyone else? Public comment, anyone else here that wishes to speak? Didn't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet. Come on up, Curtis.
Yeah, Commissioners, that also is my first cousin, and from what I understand, that they had reported this several different times to the Sheriff's Department, and I think somewhat their hands maybe were tied because of the ordinance, but I support them in what they are trying to get past, and it's kind of a sad situation. It's been about 60 or 90 days now, and they hadn't even got a forensic file yet back of who, where the bullet, which gun, or who shot it, so, but you know, do consider what they brought before you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak? This subject or any other subject? Anyone from the public here wishing to speak? All right. Forward comments, I'll start down at this end. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Lohan?
Just an update on new home building permits. Year-to-date, through July, we have issued 168 new home permits compared to 157 last year, which is about a 7% increase. The values have increased, average values from 153,000 to 195,000, which is a good positive move as far as tax base goes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman McIntyre?
No comment.
Commissioner Lauder? Commissioner Effer?
No comment.
Commissioner Swain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one statement. I know we have two fairly large farmers that I'm aware of here in the community. I don't know if the commission's aware. I see it through mutual friends of mine and, that are in the farming industry in eastern North Carolina, but I, I think it's worth noting that, that agriculture's kind of under attack right now. There's some fairly large hog farms down in the eastern part of the state. The, some out-of-state lawyers coming in and convincing people to sue their neighbors over things, and I, I just think it's worth noting that, you know, even, even in our community, that agriculture's a big part of our community. And I know the three, at least one of the three verdicts that have already been handed down, I think that farmer said they're pretty much going out of business. And the lawsuit was not even against them, it was against the integrator that supplied them with the hogs. So I think we just need to keep an eye, eye on that for our own community. I know for a fact we have one hog farm, there may, used to be two, maybe, I don't know. But I guess all of agriculture could fall victim to this, especially with all the poultry we raise here in Stanley County. But I just wanted to bring it to the attention of all of us. And I did ask for our September meeting for Samantha Foster and some other extension agents to come present to the board just the, the total value that agriculture presents or brings into Stanley County, just to give, give us a broad picture of the amount of money that agriculture means to our county. So just, that was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Appreciate you bringing that up. No comment from me. So what's, I guess we've got to go into closed session. Request that you guys make a motion to go into closed session, consult with an attorney in accordance with General Statute 143-318A3.
Got a motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Tonight, an agreement in principle has been reached among Stanley County, Union County, the town of Norwood, and the town of Wingate that settles the lawsuit brought by Stanley in Stanley County Superior Court against Union and Norwood challenging an interlocal agreement. And the lawsuit brought by Stanley in the North